Welcome to the candidate forum for Yorktown Town Council hosted by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Westchester. I'm Terri Lukin, co-president of the Northwest Westchester League. Since 1920, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy. The League does not support or endorse candidates or political parties. The League is fully committed to ensure compliance and membership is open to everyone 16 years or older. In tonight's candidate forum, you will have the opportunity to listen to candidates' views about significant issues here in the community so you can make an informed decision on November 4th, Election Day, or early voting. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome all candidates this evening: Sergio Esposito, Ilan Gilbert, Luciana Hogwarts, and Michael Hickens.
Wait for me, Michael.
Howard, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I'm part of Harry Potter.
Our moderator for this evening is John Hessel from New Rochelle, and our timekeeper is Kim Stecco.
Thank you.
The forum will be recorded, so I will take a moment to review the League's recording policy. Only the videographer authorized by the League may record this forum. Under no circumstances may candidates or attendees record the proceedings. Any unauthorized use of the recording requires the advance approval of the League of Women Voters. Only licensed media, including TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else must broadcast it in its entirety. The forum is being recorded and will be on the League's YouTube channel, hopefully now for you heard my introduction in the last one, as soon as my co-president gets into port and has access to Wi-Fi. I now turn the candidate forum over to our moderator, John Hessel, and thank you so much for coming.
So we have four candidates for the town council: Luciana, Michael, Ilan, and Sergio. You see their names there? I'm not going to try to pronounce any of the last names. We did a draw. We drew some straws for the speaking order, and this is the speaking order over here. Each candidate has two minutes to make an opening statement. Each candidate has a minute and a half to respond to each question. Each candidate will have the opportunity for two 30-second rebuttals during the debate, and you can't use a rebuttal during an opening or closing statement. Questions have been submitted by the public to the League prior to the event. They were reviewed by the League. We're not taking any questions from the audience. Candidates may not interrupt each other or make any personal attacks during the debate. After the question period, there will be closing statements in the opposite order of the opening statements, and each candidate will have two minutes for those. We have our timekeeper here doing a fabulous job, and she'll hold up a warning sign when there are 30 seconds of time remaining and a stop sign when it's time to stop. No video recording. Silence your cellphones. Hold all applause until the end of the forum. Are we ready? Oh, wait, hold on. Luciana's gonna close her cellphone. Okay. Ready for your closing statement?
Yes, I'll start.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, all. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to all of you for being here. I'm Luciana Howard, your Town Board Councilwoman, but more importantly, I'm a mom raising my family here in this town. I am a somatic practitioner who has an office in this town, and on top of that, I am a PTA and a numerous volunteer—I actually just got off one of my first meetings—in the other hall—and your neighbor. I ran for office out of love. Love not only for this town, but what this town can actually aspire to be, not ambition. I wanted Yorktown to be safer, cleaner, and continue to have a family-centered feel, a place where our children are proud to call home. Since I've been elected, we've done so many great things. We made enormous strides in safety. We achieved state accreditation for our police department, equipped our force with new vehicles, training, and body cameras, and we banned smoke shops near our schools and playgrounds. We've invested in our community: over $3.4 million towards better parks, sports fields, playgrounds, pickleball courts, and upgraded community centers. We governed responsibly, delivered a clean audit, reduced the town debt by nearly $1 million, and transferred and transformed the Underhill property, once condemned and now a thing that will produce taxes for our community and support our local business. We all wanted walkability, but look at that: we found revitalization. And I bring a holistic human approach. Through my work as a somatic therapist, I listen, and I am so excited to be here and to ask for your vote, and also to know that this town means so much to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael.
Good evening.
Yep.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Michael Hickens, and this is my first time running for office. I grew up in Queens, and my Russian Jewish mother instilled in me a deep sense that the best thing I could do was to serve others by becoming a doctor. When I fainted at the sight of my own blood, it occurred to me that maybe I needed to make a different career choice. My grandfather was a labor lawyer who defended union organizers in Zorris, Russia, and he always said that whenever considering any political issue, always first ask yourself how it affects working people. I grew up with that credo, and it informs me to this day. I moved to Yorktown in 2013 because it had a balance of town and country, of wilderness and farms. I was happy to be able to raise my son, now nine years old, in this wonderful town, and I love coaching his baseball teams. But in the past 13 years, I've seen the town become less bucolic, less wild, less varied. I've seen how working people are priced out of owning a home here, how the Town Board is open to ideas from the well-heeled and the well-connected, but less so the ordinary residents who get home at night, feed their kids, and take them to practice or dance class, and put them to bed at night. They don't have time to go to the Town Board to argue for or against someone's great idea for an eyesore that ends up taking money out of taxpayers' pockets. The Town Board has something called Courtesy of the Floor, but the only courtesy they offer is three minutes on the mic. They don't have to respect your opinion, and if what you say runs counter to what they or their friends want, they elect you for not being well enough informed and brush you off. I will be a different kind of council member. I will be a voice for working families. I will listen to and advocate for you. I will put working people first. I will oppose giving away tax breaks to developers. I will oppose overdevelopment if it isn't in the interests of Yorktown residents. I will protect the environment so our children can continue enjoying a great quality of life. I've never held public office, and I know I have a lot to learn about town government, but one thing I will always remember is that town government is a responsibility we share to each other.
Thank you very much. Ilan.
Good evening, everyone. I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for arranging this event and all participating, both as candidates and concerned citizens here tonight. Many of my supporters have told me over the years that I don't take enough credit for what I accomplished as town supervisor. So, out of curiosity, I asked AI to remind me of what I actually did during my two years in office, and honestly, even I was a little surprised by the list that came back. It is said I renegotiated the town's garbage contract immediately after discovering the prior one had left out several condominiums, and that our new deal became the envy of neighboring towns. When major storms hit the first year, we strengthened Yorktown's emergency preparedness, provided new generators, repaired roofs at the Town Hall, community center, the police department, and the court. The governor and county executive even held press conferences praising our local first responders and officials for how we handled those challenges. We moved forward with completing Granite Knowles Park, coordinated infrastructure improvements with the state and utilities, and created a Business Revitalization Committee to boost Yorktown's economy. I worked with Con Edison to remove dangerous trees at no cost to homeowners and made sure that when they cut into our roads, they paid for the repaving, not the taxpayers. We secured grants for a senior bus, school safety radar devices, and upgrades to our highway department. We enforced back taxes, collected over $400,000, which fairly benefited all the tax-paying residents. We increased revenue by negotiating long-term leases with communication carriers and, at the same time, improved communication coverage for residents as well as the vital first responders. We finished long-delayed projects at Railroad Park, and let it be clear, though: I'm a little embarrassed to list all this as my accomplishments.
Thank you.
This was done by the board that I worked with.
Thank you very much. Sergio, two minutes.
All righty. Good evening, distinguished moderators, my opponents, and the great people of Yorktown. When I first ran for councilman, I made a promise, a promise to be fully engaged, to listen to your voices, and to take real action to make Yorktown an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. I pledged to ease the tax burden on our residents by expanding our commercial tax base and revitalizing the empty storefronts that once lined our streets. I'm proud to say I delivered on that promise. Our downtown areas are thriving. We filled and created over half a million square feet of commercial space, bringing new jobs, new energy, and new opportunities back to Yorktown. I've been proud to lead this transformation from upgrading critical infrastructure and supporting our brave first responders to championing the small businesses that are the backbone of our economy. These are promises made; these are promises kept. Our downtown revitalization is something no one could ever have imagined in just a few years ago. The Yorktown Green has undergone major renovations, bringing new life into what was once a tired shopping mall. And thanks to renewed confidence in our town, the Triangle Center saw over $10 million in private investment, transforming that property that had been stuck in the past. Our parks and recreational spaces, vital to our quality of life, have also been tremendous improvements. From Granite Knowles to turf upgrades at Legacy Field, new basketball courts, playgrounds, and upgraded lighting at 202 ballfields, these enhancements are for us, our families, and our future generations. Our responsible fiscal policies earned us a clean audit, clear proof of leadership that is both smart and accountable. And finally, my unwavering support for our first responders has made a real difference. From body cameras and upgraded communications equipment to hiring more advanced life support technicians, these investments have helped make Yorktown one of the safest towns in America. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together, and I'm ready to keep moving Yorktown forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the first question goes to you, Michael. What are the most important challenges facing Yorktown, and how do you propose to address them?
I think that the overriding concern of most Yorktown residents is the overdevelopment that's occurring willy-nilly. We are approving projects without considering whether they're a benefit to Yorktown residents or not. We're giving tax breaks to those developers who—then there's a lack of revenue that we, the residents, have to backfill. And there's very little planning around how we're going to accommodate the new demands from that overdevelopment in terms of the infrastructure, whether it be the water, whether it be sewers, whether it be the roads, whether it be the schools, whether it be traffic congestion. And so I think that the overdevelopment in combination with tax giveaways is a big problem.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't taking your note.
It's gonna make my life a lot easier. Okay, Ilan, do you want me to read you the question?
Yes, please.
What are the most important challenges facing Yorktown, and how do you propose to address them?
Well, we have several significant issues, although, obviously, this town is a wonderful town, and I love this town, and that's why I am here, to try to deal with the significant issues that we are facing. As supervisor, I learned that we have significant issues with regard to aging infrastructure, and I would analogize that—I like having a beautiful time and a party at my house, but in order to do so, I have to make sure that my plumbing works, that my roofs don't leak, and that it will sustain the good times. And that's what we need to do in Yorktown. We need to deal with the failing infrastructure, and you don't want to build upon failing infrastructure because that can become disastrous.
Thank you, Sergio.
The biggest challenge that we have here in Yorktown and in any town are rising costs. Healthcare is through the roof. It has increased every year consistently. When your electric bill goes up, our electric bill goes up at the town. When your gas bill goes up, our gas bill goes up at the town. Now, I keep hearing, "Oh, there's overbuilding in this." How do you propose we pay for these extra costs that go up every year? By the way, let's not forget our contract with our employees: 3% baked into the contract every year. Everybody's salaries go up 3% every year, and so how do you propose we pay for this? The town makes money one of two ways. The town either raises taxes or brings in revenue. And we've turned down many, many projects, so the concept that we're willy-nilly just, you know, giving money out is a farce. It's a talking point. It's not accurate. Because if you don't build and bring in new additional revenue by bringing in new businesses and by filling empty storefronts and by bringing in new projects, how do you propose we pay for that? All those increases? I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard one thing. I heard, "Well, we have to do this, and we have to do that." Yeah, no problem. You're right. We do have to do all of that. How is the overarching question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Luciana?
You can read the question again.
Okay. What are the most important challenges facing Yorktown, and how do you propose to address them?
So it's interesting, I guess I get to sit upon my opponents and say, "Yes, we need development," because no one's going to approve a new development that's sitting on damaged goods, right? They have to upgrade the infrastructure. It's a way to leverage the developer to upgrade the infrastructure, which is failing because we have a beautiful town, and it is incredibly large. It's made up of five different hamlets that all have different visions, different history, different wants and desires. And yes, I don't want it to come out of the pockets of those that live here. Therefore, the developers who build the development, not just refurbish a box that might be empty, have to upgrade the infrastructure, and through that have to have a way to support our local businesses and create revenue so our children don't have to go down county, so our seniors can get their resources. So when we hear overdevelopment, I'm gonna ask you, do you know what they actually do? Underground, they fix the plumbing, and they fix the wires, and they upgrade the systems. And then you know what else happens? When they go to sounds, like, let's say, the registers or whatnot, they're fixing boxes that have no way to get accessibility. So when it starts downtown, it bleeds out into the hamlets that need our support. So let's pay attention to that, because the underground, not the shiny things, are what's important for this town so that we can live here.
Okay, yeah, you get two rebuttals. This is your first one.
So, the question of revenue is—the problem that is being raised here is that the choice is a false choice. We don't have to raise taxes enormously to pay for what needs to be done. We have a $24 million fund balance, and that fund balance is—much of it is unassigned, and according to the assessor, is much, much higher than other places. And we do not require the developers to do the full cost of the infrastructure.
Thank you, Michael.
Can I use a rebuttal?
Sure.
Okay. So when you have a budget, it needs to have a reservation of 50%. We are a tremendous town. To have 50%, though 24 feels a lot, you don't make up what you lose. That's why the 485B works, though we've only used it eight times in 15 years, because they still have to pay the base taxes, but they have to give you half of the increases, not the full increase. And if you don't know how to do that, you can look it up. You don't have to roll your eyes. And at that point, I will let you know that each health fund has to have 50%, even on the PTA for volunteers. So what do you think we got?
Thank you, thank you. You guys want to get in on this?
Yeah, you know what? I'll use one of my rebuttals.
Okay, there you go.
So, another talking point is the fund balance. Let me tell you how the fund balance works. We're able—I'm not right?
Could you get it closer to you?
Okay.
Start over.
Okay. So do I start over?
Yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead. Start over. Reset it. Reset his timer.
So the way the fund balance works is the fund balance allows us to take money out of it to fix projects as opposed to increasing our long-term debt. If we have the money in the piggy bank, we could use it, and we've used it extensively. And so because of our fiscal management, it comes back to us, thankfully, because of how we're running the town. We've cut over $900,000 in long-term debt because instead of paying interest on the money that we have to borrow to fix the infrastructure projects, we get to use our own money, and we get to avoid long-term debt.
Thank you, Sergio.
Question or rebuttal?
All right, get in on it.
All right. Several issues regarding what was just said by Luciana and Sergio, just in terms of, yes, developers often bring in new infrastructure for their own project, and then they have to tie in to the aging infrastructure of the town. And when I was the supervisor, as soon as I came in, I found out that the Lowe's project, had it gone forward the way it was supposed to, it was going—we were going to be responsible for the Lowe's infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the next question.
All right.
And this starts with you, Ilan. Ilan.
Ilan.
Ilan.
Lanny.
Lanny.
Just go with Lanny.
"How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our community?"
All right, when I was the supervisor, once again, you may be hearing that a lot this evening, but I required all—the work sessions and the regular Town Board meetings to be televised. That was not the case prior to my becoming supervisor. You need an informed population, and that's one way to do so. But we need to have, I believe, making it easier—I think the way the agendas have been structured right now is—and I think Michael brought this up at one point—you have young families, people who are busy working, raising their kids, and they don't have time to spend watching all the presentations that go on before the board before they get to make a statement about their concerns about what's happening in the town. And I would like to offer an extended Courtesy of the Floor and an earlier Courtesy of the Floor, and potentially a second Courtesy of the Floor after certain projects have been discussed so that even though it's not a public hearing, citizens can comment on those potential projects.
Okay, thank you very much. Sergio, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our community?
So, you know, Town Hall and the Tuesday meeting isn't the only way to involve people and listen to what they have to say. I'm out there all the time, listening to people. I get tons and tons of emails. I mean, I'm a full-time councilman. It's a part-time job, but I'm at it every day, and I'm just always involved. And I get questions from people all the time. So that's one way to do it. Another way, which I think is a great idea, is probably to hold a Town Hall every once in a while and have people come in and speak just that. So this way, we'll have an hour or two hours or something to that effect where people come in and they're able to ask questions and ask what they want, and it's not going to be during a regular meeting where we have presentations, we have all of this stuff, and then people get tired and they go home because they can't stay out. That's one way I think we could involve people. But to be quite honest, get out there and talk to people. I talk to people all the time. I mean, I'm out there, I'm asking questions, I get emails, I'm inundated. I love the inundation, don't get me wrong, with emails, and people are asking me questions. I get all the time, and I inform them, and I keep them informed. We could also use social media, and we do a lot on our social media page, on the town's page—I do a lot on mine—to get to the public and to tell them what's going on in the town, and they comment all the time. And let me tell you something: there's no holds barred when somebody's commenting on a post on Facebook, so you're getting the raw, real feeling of people, and I think that's important, too.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the nicest thing in the world, but it's nice.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you. Luciana, do you need the question?
Nope, I don't need the question. So I keep inviting people to come and bring their voices. I think that there's a lot of places where you can speak, such as the internet, on our pages, being tagged in all the Yorktown communities, along with—you can send emails, you can reach one of our department heads, you can go to our town clerk and ask for information. It's all there. But here's what I really want: I want to hear everyone's voice. And I feel like what happens is people go onto a link, and they follow the noise, and they start to believe the noise. And then on Tuesday night, it's always the same faces. And although I love my same faces, I beg you, you have the schedule. Show up. Come in. Support the voices, and also bring a new voice. Bring a new perspective. I get it. I'm very similar to Sergio, and I understand that people are out. So I speak alongside the ballfields, and I speak in front of Yorktown stage or after work at the restaurant or a local event. But I would love to see someone take up those three minutes and really find their voice, not just keep reposting the same noise from the same anonymous people just to make heartache. I do not think that anyone sitting up here has time to keep following those awful comments. So to get more involved, I ask the residents, "Please come. Please come and bring your voice. Be your own individual, and let us see you. Let us hear you." And I'm sorry if we don't always agree, but we're gonna hear you, and that's what's important.
Thank you. Michael?
So, what we're hearing from the people who are currently on the board is that they're already listening to you, so they don't need to listen more to you. That's not what I think is right. I think that the Courtesy of the Floor is extremely badly in need of reform. There is another forum called Public Comment, which is not limited to three minutes, and I think that that's a tool that we should use more often. I also believe that we need to solicit input from groups that we don't ordinarily hear from, for instance, organized labor, so that the voices of working people are heard more regularly and substantially on the Town Board. I agree that we don't want to hear 15 people coming up saying the same thing that they read on Facebook, but we do need to hear from more people. We need to hear from people who are not involved currently in the system.
Okay, thank you very much. Sergio, this question is to you.
Wait, I'm sorry, didn't Lanny get—did Lanny get the question?
He was first.
He started. He started. Don't make me question my charts over here. "Some residents feel that development in Yorktown is out of control." What are your thoughts about this concern, and how would you address it?
So, again, I'll start with the fact that we have rising costs in this town, and I will also tell you that we just recently—actually, the developer pulled his application because he saw the writing on the wall, and we were going—it was a significant project, and we were going to deny his inclusion into the overlay district, which in fact kills the project. There is a concern about the aging infrastructure. Nobody has told me how they're willing to pay for it. We just heard about how to involve people, and I haven't heard any really significant way to actually bring people in. I mean, Town Hall is open all the time, and if people aren't coming in, I didn't hear how you're going to pull them in. But as far as the overdevelopment, I don't think it's overdevelopment. We've revitalized a significant portion of this town. Take a look at the Underhill project. I know everybody has a pet peeve about it. That piece of property didn't pay taxes for 34 years. About two years ago, they're paying about $50,000, $60,000 in taxes for the first time. And after the project is developed, they're going to be bringing in over $1 million. That property was rotting away. Three, four of the buildings were condemned. They had to be torn down. The Underhill—the Soundview School did that place no favors. If you want to be mad at somebody about why that property failed, go after Soundview because they did not take care of that property. They destroyed it.
Okay. Thanks, Sergio. Luciana?
Can you read the question again?
Yeah. "Some residents feel that development in Yorktown is out of control. What are your thoughts about this concern, and how would you address it?"
I have to say, I love that word, "out of control." When I moved here in 2015, I cried that the only thing I could have was pizza, and now I can have so much more than just pizza. Because here's what happened: the world woke up, and Yorktown got revitalized. And it started in downtown because people wanted to stop using cars and maybe walk. And you can't walk from the other side of town to across town. And now it's spreading, and the needs are spreading. So when I hear that it's out of So when I hear that it's out of control, if you Google AI, the same people who said it was a desert and it was vacant, now we're complaining that it's too revitalized for them. But my kids are growing up here and their grandparents want to live here and their aunts and uncles want to stay. And there needs to be a diverse housing market. And every Realtor in this town is telling us, there's nothing to get. And that's the cool part, because everybody wants to come to Yorktown. And those that want to come to Yorktown want to stay and grow here because they have a family member who's loved and been here for a very long time. And I think that's the beauty about this place. It keeps connecting and it keeps connecting those that they love to a town that they love. And that's the boom. So what's out of control is that Yorktown's pretty awesome.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Well, as I said in my opening statement, when I voted, when I, when I moved here 13 years ago, it was a vastly different place. And I moved here because of the characteristics that it had and that we are losing. There is no question that Routes 202 and Route 6 are overcrowded and becoming largely eyesores. You know, the Navajo Fields project was pulled, but the, the town council could still have voted to reject the idea of extending the overlay district. That would have put the issue to bed, but they didn't. They punted on it because sometime down the line, I'm not going to say after the election, but after the election perhaps, they're going to come back. In the meantime, the, the current board has been in office for three and a half years and all of the things that they say they would like to do, like to have seen done, haven't been done yet, such as making Yorktown more walkable, such as having better parks. There are still, while there's been investment in parks, there are still parks that are well below substandard. And they haven't been touched. And we haven't done things like put solar on top of the parking lot and granite knolls that could have given us $500,000 in revenue as it has done on Croton, but we didn't do that for a reason that really isn't very clear.
Okay, thank you very much. Lanny?
I don't need the question reread, but I don't necessarily believe that development is out of control because I don't want to be perceived as anti-development. I believe in development, but responsible development. I think the proper projects for the proper location, filling empty storefronts, some of those things that the, the board claims that the, the current board claims credit for in terms of the Yorktown Green, nothing could have, while I was supervisor, I'd made many efforts to try to see how we could revitalize the Yorktown Green. But Kmart was going through bankruptcy and nothing was going to happen at that location until that was resolved. And ultimately, it was resolved and then the floodgates opened. And Uncle Giuseppe's, for example, came in, went into Turco's first because the owner of Uncle Giuseppe's was very friendly with Preston Turco. I knew that they were eventually going to move over to the Food Emporium location when it became available. So we, we do need to encourage business and development, but it needs to be the right project for the right location.
Okay, thank you. Luciana, this question starts with you.
Okay.
Yorktown is proud of their first responders. What, if any, do you see as the most pressing issues to address to maximize the police and fire department's abilities to do their jobs?
So it's really interesting because I, well, with full disclosure, my husband is a paramedic here in town, he works for Empress. And one of the things he'll say is that we should be seeing them for what they do because they're equally on site with the fire. So for me, what's pressing is to keep them in our front line, to remember the men and women that come to us when we're highly in need and to notice that that line item needs to be on our budget. And that is probably why some of our parks are not done, because we're keeping the town safe and we're investing in those lines instead of the pocket parks, because we're waiting for grants for that. Because there is nothing more than I would want to see, just like we have the fire districts. I would love to have a medical district for the medics in this town. I would love to have the infrastructure to house more medics on all angles of our hamlets so that they can get there, though I have to say, even today, they get to you in four to six minutes. So with that being said, for me, we are here and we're trying to do a greater movement, something that's partnering with the state, to make them a mandated budget line for their community and to not make it wipe out. And if we went and fixed all those things through our fund balance, you guys would get assessed and the taxes would only go crazy. So we're being conservative and we're seeing how to keep these frontliners safe while also keeping our streets safe.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I think that the first responders in this town are amazing. I've personally had to make use of first responders twice. I couldn't, well, actually, three times. And I couldn't be more impressed, not only with the quality of the police, but also the EMS and the firefighters here. And in fact, it was in my interactions with some of them that I, that came from other districts to help out, that they were really impressed with the qualifications and the knowledge of the first responders here in Yorktown. That said, I would say that the things that this, the first responders need, the current board has been, again, they've been in office for four years. And they haven't done, they have paid for the equipment that the first responders have asked for. But in terms of actual support, what are we doing to help the first responders in terms of their medical needs, in terms of their mental health needs? We need to do more to support the people who are helping us.
Okay, thank you. Lanny?
Having been... I'll start the sen, start the sentence.
Reset him.
Starting the sentence, as I said, I may do several times tonight. As supervisor, I was extremely supportive of our police department. But I really, I have to admit, and I will admit this to, that every board that I've seen over the last 15 years has been supportive of our department. And it has grown. And it has grown and it has protected us. And they've developed into a police force that is part of the community, and I'm very impressed with that. Chief Noble has done a terrific job in, they basically, we've hired, and while I was supervisor, again, we hired individuals, we try to hire individuals, some of them local kids, that have come back to the community and they want to serve the community, they want, and they can relate to the population of the community. And I, the other, last night, I guess it was last night, we had four or five promotions to individuals that are Yorktown or Cortland or Peak Skill residents, local, kids from the local area. And they know who we are, they know this town, they know the, our population, and they know our needs. And I just think that's a wonderful thing. So I'm fully supportive. And the last thing I wanted to add was, I did work hard to try to get the communications improved at the time for, for our first responders.
Thank you very much. Sergio?
Take the mic. Mr. Gilbert worked hard to get the communications improved, but we improved them. We got it done. And, 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 you know, to Mr. Higgins, I mean, experience matters. The law enforcement, we have nice ship, all of us, all town employees. It's an incredible health plan. That's why it costs so much to the town. They have all of these benefits, counseling for anything, just pretty much whatever they need. They have the ability to do that. That's why it's important that we know what we're talking about and we don't just use rhetoric to make it sound like nobody cares about anybody. Because nobody but nobody supports the, the, our law enforcement, it's like me. As a matter of fact, I'm a deputy sheriff in Westchester County. The quality, the quality that we have is because of our town board support. And Lanny's right. Multiple town boards have supported our law enforcement, and it's very important. But we've gotten them new communications, body cams, support for first responders, we added a second fly car, we added a new ALS technician, we added, and what I would like to do to help them out, I know everybody has this concern with traffic, I'd like to see if we could get another position or reorganize, I don't know, you have to talk to the chief, he's probably going to get mad at me. But to have more people on traffic, we're talking about traffic, well, maybe we add, we find it in the budget somehow and we add a, a second, I mean, a third or fourth person that's going to be patrolling the area and, and, and looking at traffic. We're also equipping the cars with LPR cameras. So this way, we have more data and more information and it'll keep them safe and sound.
Okay, thank you, Sergio. Thank you. Okay. We're starting this one with you, Michael. What initiatives, if any, need to be, need to be implemented to meet the needs of our community's seniors?
Well, one of the things that I think that the seniors need in this town are easier ways of getting into the center of the hamlets. At a recent board meeting, Mr. Esposito said that we should get the developers to provide free shuttles to seniors to, to get to these places. And I couldn't agree more. I am just sorry that it hasn't been done yet. I also feel like we need to invest more in affordable housing by asking the developers, by requiring developers to set aside portions of the developments that they're creating for fixed income people, so that the seniors who live here and want to stay here and are downsizing can stay here.
Thank you. Lanny?
Once again, we have a good head start, I believe, on, we have a wonderful senior center with incredible staffing for our seniors. We actually generate revenue by supplying meals, not only to our residents, but the Somers, I believe, we have cooked right out here. We have a great group of seniors who are involved with the Senior Advisory Committee that meets monthly. I helped orchestrate that being televised as well for open government. And I believe that that head start enables us to address the needs of those seniors. We bring in individuals at those meetings, we bring in individuals from the hospitals to lecture or to speak to, rather than lecture, but speak to the seniors about health issues. And we have, we're doing some great things, but more can be done. But we have to focus on, again, transportation, making sure that we, the seniors, it's, things are as convenient to seniors as possible.
Okay, thank you. Sergio?
So we already currently have shuttling service in Yorktown. I mean, can it be increased? Yeah, absolutely. I don't see a problem with that. Because the biggest problem with, for the seniors is getting from point A to point B. And, and I think we should be conscious of that and, and, but we do have shuttling service, so maybe we could look at, at increasing that. But again, that all takes money. And when you're, when you're anti-development, where do you get the money from? You get the money from raising your taxes. The, what I'm hearing, our fund balance would be at zero in about 30 seconds if these guys took over. We're just going to spend this money and throw it willy-nilly. Anyway, let's get back to the seniors. We actually do also have a large amount of affordable housing in Yorktown. Can there be more? Sure, there could always be more. Everybody could always say, well, there's always could be more. Yeah, everything could be more. I could always make more money, I could always donate more to charities, you could always do more, okay? It's never going to be enough. But we have Noreen O'Driscoll, and she's wonderful. And she does so many things with the seniors. And I actually, as a matter of fact, when I was president of the chamber, I actually had a senior discount program for the seniors. Aaron knows, when, when, when they used to go to other places, restaurants, they would give them 10% off or they would give them a $5 discount, something like that. And as a matter of fact, I'm bringing that back. There was a recommendation from Noreen Perrell, and we're making up logos and we're making up all of this stuff. And we have actually a list of restaurants and stuff like that.
Okay.
That are going to contribute to that.
Thanks, Sergio.
Can I, can I use my?
Sure, go right ahead.
I am offended, but, but I can appreciate where it's coming from. It's political. But to be told that we will run the town dry in terms of economics is, it's laughable to me. When I took over as supervisor, I was left approximately a $6 to $9 million fund balance of unrestricted funds. When I left office, I left $18 million for the supervisor that succeeded me, Matt Slater. And that enabled Matt, I believe, to prevent any budget cuts and any cut in services during COVID.
Thank you very much. Luciana, you still can answer this question.
Okay, can you read it again?
Sure.
So we can get back on target?
What initiatives, if any, need to be implemented to meet the needs of our community's seniors?
So what I'm hearing here is having a lifestyle that's affordable. And as we spoke before, the cost of living has gone crazy. The amount of doctors that don't call back has gone insane. The amount of ways that we can help our seniors is also to involve our younger community. I mean, yesterday I heard about Con Ed having glitches at Jefferson Village. Some of us can get on the phone and start defending our seniors, support them, because there is more here than just where they live. Not everybody wants to live in affordable housing. Sometimes I need that for the younger generation. What I do need is sustainability, places where we can grow old and still live a vibrant life. And I think bringing the community and merging the community to support one another, including our vets, because I have a lot of veterans that need the same thing, that are on restricted incomes, and how are they going to get there? I mean, we work with the pantries and sometimes I feel like, how many people are getting a bag in the same households? But how do you say no? It's hard, it's hard. But I think that if I can get the younger generation to start listening and respecting the older generations and learning from where the grassroots came from, we can support one another. But we also need a sustainable lifestyle and things to become more affordable. And that unfortunately starts from the top.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael, you have a rebuttal?
Yeah. I would just like to say that the idea that we're, that Democrats are anti-development is wrong, as has been said before, it's about having the right projects in the right place. And in terms of the shuttles, I was, I, I specifically said that what Mr. Esposito had suggested was that the developers should pay for those shuttles. And I agree that that's a really good idea, only it hasn't been done. And the current board has been in office for four years. And there's, for 10 years, there have been no tax increases while prices have been rising. Inflation is not a new thing, but the boards.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And yes, you have a rebuttal? Yes, you do.
Okay, nothing happens in a vacuum. We could be here for four years, I could be here for 10 years. The amount of vetting that goes on in working with the government, let's just face it, you have no idea how much red tape we have to go through. So this whole inkling that we've done nothing, I would love for you to sit in my house or in our desk, because we do a lot. And not only do we do a lot, we do it right. And we listen to not only ourselves, but experts, because we are not solely the expert. We're the voice of this community. And the idea that we've done nothing in three and a half years or that we didn't sit here because of what happened, we've survived COVID.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, are you getting in on this?
Yeah, why not?
You got one left.
Why not? Let's, let's, let's burn them all, so this way we get through this. Okay, so I will tell you, look around. The town is thriving. You may not agree with everything that I say. And I'm not, if anybody agrees with me 100%, I'll call them crazy. But look around, the town is thriving. It went from empty storefronts, it went from people going to Peak Skill and to, and to Mount Kisco to eat, now people stay here. We've given them choices. And to say we're not doing anything, that's crazy. Last time, in the last debate, they, somebody said that the town, the, the, the town board shouldn't be involved in businesses, which is ridiculous.
You can pick it up here because we're about to start the closing statements. And you start.
This is the closing statement?
Yes, we got two minutes.
Who's in favor of adding another hour to this? I'm having fun. This is fun.
Do I get overtime?
I like that, you get overtime, you get, you know what?
I get one and a half of nothing, so, yeah, that's right.
I like seeing the 30 seconds and the stop.
Just put up, just put up stop right now, please. Okay.
All right, all right, all right, all right. These closing statements, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's quick, went quick.
I'm having fun, it's, you know, I'm a little disappointed. All right, ready?
Go ahead.
Over the past four years, Yorktown hasn't just moved forward, we've risen. We've seen real progress, not empty promises. Our quality of life has improved, our neighborhoods are... stronger, and our town is thriving because of bold action, not just talk. I'm proud to have played a leading role in this transformation from upgrading our infrastructure to backing our brave first responders and as Yorktown's small business advocate, championing the small businesses that are the heart of our local economy. I've been all in every single day. And nobody, what I mean, nobody cares more deeply for this town, our seniors and our youth than me. I believe in a Yorktown where our neighbors are safe, our streets are walkable, and our town, every hamlet, every corner, reflects the pride that we all share in calling the community home. That's why I'm committed to continuing this progress by improving our quality of life and revitalizing our infrastructure, making our town more connected and pedestrian-friendly, supporting public safety. As a Westchester County deputy sheriff, not only do I know what it takes for local law enforcement to succeed from the inside, I am totally committed, committed to keeping our streets safe. And fiscal responsibility. My experience in municipal law has streamlined our local government, saving taxpayers' dollars, saving taxpayer dollars. As far, as for the town's pocketbook, our reserves are up, allowing us to pay for improvements without taking out expensive loans. And as a result, our debt is down. If you believe in real solutions, tireless work and proven results, I respectfully ask for your vote this November.
Thank you. Lanny?
I've been a public servant for over 43 years, from my time as Yorktown supervisor, town judge, to serving on the conservation and zoning boards, as a court attorney, referee in Supreme Court for nearly four decades. My career has been of one thing, service to others. Currently, I have the privilege of serving New York State as a commissioner for the New York State Bridge Authority and as an administrative law judge for Westchester County. As Liam Neeson might say, I bring a particular set of skills to the table. Our town is at a crossroads, and now more than ever, we need steady, experienced leadership to guide Yorktown forward. My experience as supervisor where I strengthened emergency preparedness, improved infrastructure, held taxes down through smart budgeting, and promoted business growth proves I know how to get things done. When I left office, I knew Yorktown was better off than when I found it. And I believe that the same level of dedication and effectiveness is needed now more than ever. We're building on aging infrastructure and we cannot afford to ignore it. We must address our water and sewer systems, harden our operations for future crises, and build with both vision and care. For four years, I stepped away from public service. I watched some of my initiatives continue under Matt Slater and Tommy Diana. But recently, I've seen signs that we're slipping back into old habits. Same developers, same tactics, and the same disconnected decision-making are resurfacing. I believe that needs to change. Like John F. Kennedy said, "I'm not asking what this town can do for me. I'm asking what I can continue to do for Yorktown." And I'm asking all of you out there to help me give that opportunity, get that opportunity. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. Michael?
Thank you for listening tonight and thank you for caring enough about Yorktown to be here or watching online. When I decided to run for town council, people asked me why I'd put myself through this. The answer is simple. Because someone needs to stand up for the Yorktown that brought me here 12 years ago. A town where working families could afford to build a life, where nature wasn't just a nice to have but part of our identity, where your voice mattered even if you didn't have connections. Tonight, you've heard my opponents talk about their experience. And yes, they have experience. But experience doing what? Experience approving tax breaks for developers while your property taxes keep rising? Experience green lighting projects that neighbors oppose? Experience listening politely for three minutes and then doing whatever they'd already decided? I have experience as an executive at a large corporation and I know how to get things done. I've been an editor at the Wall Street Journal. I'm not asking you to elect me because I'm an expert in municipal code or zoning laws. I'm asking you to elect me because I will do something they haven't done. I will put your interests first, every time. Not just during courtesy of the floor, but in every conversation, every negotiation, every vote. My grandfather's question, "How does this affect working people?" will be my north star on this council. This is why I've earned endorsements from Westchester Unions and the Working Families Party. Before any development gets approved, before any tax break gets handed out, I will ask, "Does this serve the people who live here? Does this make life better or harder for families trying to make it in Yorktown?" I'm a baseball coach. I know that when you put a team together, everyone has to pull in the same direction. Right now, our town government isn't pulling for all of us, just for some of us. That needs to change. You deserve a council member who will fight to keep Yorktown affordable, who will protect open spaces and natural beauty, who will actually listen to you and then act on what you say. I'm asking for your vote so I can be that voice for you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Luciana?
Thank you all for being here and thank you so much for caring about the future of the Yorktown Town Board. I really appreciate it and I appreciate your time. I want Yorktown to continue to be that model, that place that people see safety balance and heart, where growth happens thoughtfully and every resident feels seen and heard. I believe leadership is about listening and also showing up, not only when it's political season, let's face it. And that's what I've done. I've always, and I continue to show up. Consistency seems to be one of my best qualities. I am always at the playground with my boys. I'm always meeting a senior at Sparkle Lake. I'm always helping a neighbor navigate a town issue. I'm always there to answer a silly question. And if you haven't noticed, I know a little bit about construction. With that being said, I care deeply and wholeheartedly for the people here in Yorktown. As I continue this journey and ask for reelection, I do it with so much gratitude. Thank you. Because this job, it's a lot, but its rewards are seeing the faces every day that you know you're fighting for. In a time where there's so much pain in the world, I get to come home to a place that's doing so much more in its community than other places nearby. For that, you're going to see that I am grateful that you have my trust and my honesty and my beliefs. And together, we can build a town that we can all be proud to call home. Thank you for allowing me to serve and for believing in our shared vision and for being part of what Yorktown makes special. God bless you all.
Okay, thank you very much. We can applaud your candidates. I always say this, I said this earlier, it's not easy to do this. So we should really appreciate people stepping up and, you know, trying to represent you. Thank you for the town of Yorktown, for the venue, the videographer, the audio guy, the audio guy, Kim Stucko, our timekeeper, volunteers, the audience, good audience. And all the candidates for participating, www.lwv-nww.org sometime in the future. You can watch it.